Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the September 27th, 2021 study session of the University City, City Council to order at approximately 5:34 PM. Prior to turning the program over to the city manager, are there any changes to the regular agenda requested by members of council or by the city manager? Hearing that, Mr. Rose?
I'm Mayor and council members. I appreciate having the opportunity to present to you tonight an update on the Loop area project in 2019. Well, let me digress for a second. I want to recognize the people that are on the project team and our co-presenters, Vice Chancellor Assistant Vice Chancellor Joanna Schuler with Washington University. We have Police Chief Larry Hampton and we have Chief Glenn, Mark Glenn, that is also participating. In 2019, we began a project of working with, really a partnership of working with Washington University with the goal of trying to address or better address, minimize the crime that occurs in the, what we've defined as the Loop area, not just crime that occurs, but also the fear of crime. So that was the primary objective and how the project was started. The Loop area was actually, the boundaries consist of north to Vernon, south to the city limits, west to Big Ben, and east to the city limits. And that was the area that while it encompasses what most people think of as the Loop, there are several residential areas that are also included within this project. Our initial step was to conduct a SEPTED analysis. And I'm hopeful that Gabby will share my, share the screen here. Perfect. If you go to the next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, next slide. Okay, thank you. Our initial step into the project, we wanted to have a good sense of what we were dealing with as related to the type of crime that was occurring as well as whether we were creating an environment for crime to happen and for people to be more fearful. So our police chief with his staff conducted a SEPTED analysis, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, which really yielded a number of areas that we believe we need to focus on. One is tree pruning. And you might not think much of tree pruning, but trees, once their canopy is so large, it begins to impact the amount of light that's coming from the various lights that are, streetlights that are out there. And if you recall, the city only began investing in tree pruning about three years ago at this point. Prior to that, it had not happened in any substantive way for over 10 years. And so there's a lot of catch-up that, that we're needing to, to do in that area. Graffiti abatement is another area where we'll focus increased lighting as well as focusing our code enforcement on property maintenance. And if you recall, included in this budget, you dedicated resources so that we can not be reactive in the future, but proactive in our code enforcement efforts and we're working to bring those compliance officers on board. Next page. Our focus has not been on trying to increase the number of police officers that we are using to address crime. Rather, it is to really focus more on the use of technology and how can we augment the patrol that we currently have. Some examples of the use of technology that we're looking into are cameras, drones, and also the emergency phone system. This is something that Washington University has already implemented. We want to evaluate the effectiveness of that phone system and make some decisions about whether we think that that type of technology could be useful, more broad-based. Next page. I'd like now to turn the presentation over to Vice Chancellor and have her present, just to familiarize you with some of the activity and programs that Washington U has underway. And I believe Ms. Schuler is going to share her screen.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Good evening, Mayor Crowe and, and council members. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss the efforts that Washington University has put in place over time and built on as we focused on working with University City on, on safety initiatives. Bear with me. Let's see. Over the, over time, our, our approach to off-campus safety certainly has centered on our Washington University Police Department, which is comprised of 66 employees, including 47 commissioned officers working under Chief Glenn's leadership and working collaboratively with law enforcement in University City in the city of St. Louis, St. Louis County, and in Clayton. An important part of our focus on the neighborhoods and in the neighborhood surrounding the Danforth Campus where the university owns off-campus housing is our Neighborhood Patrol Unit. The unit includes 12 officers and five security patrol officers who are in the designated neighborhoods, in the high-traffic walkways, in marked vehicles, on bicycles and on, on foot. In 2020, the Neighborhood Patrol Unit provided over 44,000 hours of patrols in Ames Place and Parkview Gardens and on Del Mar. Some of the examples of the areas of partnership have included training, partnership patrols for events and weekends, including weekends where we expect there to be a lot of outside presence. Also, in addition, the university provides an annual contribution to the University City Police Department. The Woo PD Off-Campus Patrol Zones include the Del Mar Zone along Kingsland to Skinker and Olive to Del Mar, that area, the Greenway Zone, which is along, spans between Big Ben and Skinker, and then Del Mar to University Drive, from, from the north to the south. And then the Rosedale Zone, which is east of University City, east of Skinker to DePere, and also Del Mar to Forest Park Parkway. In terms of the initiatives that we have underway, in terms of our security programs and technology, we have a Crime Prevention Office, which provides training on various aspects of safety, including training on theft and risk reduction techniques on pedestrian safety. This office is also responsible for our regular SEPTED reviews of university-owned properties. We also offer a widely-used Wash U Safe App, which is a free personal mobile safety app available to university community that provides safety information for our campuses and our nearby neighborhoods. It includes features that enable friends to be able to monitor a friend's travel as they get to intended locations. It includes mobile blue light functions for crisis situations, which enable users to be able to call for assistance and then also for law enforcement to be able to have an exact location in real time for the caller and also provides information and access to resource maps and other emergency procedures. We have our neighborhood liaisons, which are staff that are employed in the neighborhoods, specifically in Ames Place and Parkview Gardens and University City, and they are liaisons to students. And they educate on expectations of living in the community and also provide needed information on public safety resources. Along Del Mar, in a property that is near the Del Mar Station, 5977 Del Mar, we have a, a building that is dedicated to housing the Joint MetroLink Safety Task Force, which is a partnership between the St. Louis City Police Department, St. Louis County, and Woo PD. We've recently launched a Neighborhood Ambassador's Pilot Program. As a pilot, our first year of the pilot occurred in our 2020-2021 academic year. We're now in the beginning of year two of the pilot and that, this initiative is, is underway in University City and in the East Loop Community Improvement District. This is a program that is focused on providing unarmed third-party personnel that are highly visible on foot and bicycles in the community. They're there to serve as resources to, to students and employees and also neighbors, but to respond to basic questions about public safety resources and to serve as eyes and ears to be able to report incidents to law enforcement. Our additional initiatives really focus on infrastructure, including the blue light phone system that Mr. Rose talked about, which is, is an important investment that we have made. In additional, in addition, we have our Closed Circuit TV program, which is an investment of a network of cameras on campus and around our off-campus residential buildings. These, these channels provide information that's helpful in terms of responding to incidents, also identifying issues in areas, all based on the SEPTED principles. And the video footage has also been used very much to help in terms of investigating crimes and issues. We have our pedestrian lighting program, which is our walkway lighting throughout our campuses and in the surrounding neighborhoods. And that too is based on SEPTED principles, both focused on lighting but landscaping, and the areas are along Greenway Wall from the pedestrian bridge to Del Mar, also along Skinker in the city of St. Louis. And we are currently working in partnership with our, with the team here as we talk about an investment of $750,000 for lighting equipment and, and design as part of the Westgate Improvement Project that University City is, has, has been focused on. One of the significant investments we've made is part of our safety and security focus has been in the Wash U Shuttle Service. And the Shuttle Service is available for free to all faculty, students, and staff. It runs during the academic year. The two important shuttle areas in the Loop are, in, in the surrounding communities are the Del Mar Loops Shuttle and the Lewis Collaborative Shuttle. They run every 10 minutes on weekdays and every 20 minutes on weekends. And the coverage provides routes that run clockwise and counterclockwise, trying to ensure that we're able to service the needs of the, of the university community. We also have a Campus-to-Home Shuttle, which is available seven days a week to provide safe rides home from the Danforth Campus to off-campus residences. And this service is available daily to all members of the university community. It also operates during winter and summer breaks. In addition to our shuttle program, we also offer free access to public transit in terms of our UPAS program, which provides free transportation on the MetroLink and on Metrobus. But then we also have the Green Line Bus Service, which operates in the areas that are around, surrounding the Danforth Campus. And certainly access to the multiple MetroLink stations that are adjacent to the campus and neighborhoods. And with that, I will also just want to make sure that I convey the appreciation that we feel in, in terms of being able to work collaboratively with Mr. Rose and Chief Hampton as part of this team. We're committed to these efforts and look forward to continuing to identify ways to work together on initiatives. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. Rose.
You are muted, Gregory.
And I say such great things too. The reason that we, Gabby, if you would load the rest of my presentation back in, thank you. The reason that we selected the Loop area was really because it had the highest crime rate in the, we believe that we could have a significant impact, not just using city resources, but if we were able to leverage those with Washington University resources as well, we thought that we would have a significant impact in this area. So our next steps is to evaluate the placement of cameras. I mentioned earlier that that was one of the technology type of uses that we were looking at. We want to identify what funding sources are available for this project and identify any legislative barriers that might exist. Some of the concerns relative to the use of drones, which we, at this point, intend to, to use as a part of this project, we want to ensure that, that there are no legislative barriers to us during this. And finally, my intention is to provide you with, with periodic updates on how this project is advancing. Next slide. And I, as well as Ms. Schuler, would be happy to respond to any questions that you have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And if we could allow me to go to a full screen or everybody so that I could see who would like to ask questions. I have a number of questions I'm, I'd like to ask, but I would like to yield to my colleagues first, as is tradition. If I can figure out how to get everybody back up here, which I have not. I don't know if that's me or if that's you guys.
It's Gabby. She'll stop sharing and then you'll be able to.
Okay, okay, okay.
Gab, if you would stop sharing the presentation. I don't see it on my screen now.
We're gonna need John Mulligan's son again. And Gabby, that was not a dig at you. That was just a funny quip. So. I can see council members Cusick and McMahon. So I don't know if either of you have questions. If you, Mr. Cusick, if I can start with you, then we'll go forward and we'll keep moving.
Thank you. I do have one question on one of the, it said the next steps was to evaluate placement of cameras. Are these cameras monitored by University City Police Department or by Washington University Police Department?
These are monitored by University City Police Department.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, I, again, I, if anyone, I think Wayne, Wayne's using technology now. He has his hand up. That's pretty good. I can see his hand up in his screen. Councilmember Smotherson.
Thank you.
Can we stop the screen share?
We're trying.
Okay, then I'll ask my question. This is to city manager Rose or actually to Chief Hampton. And my question is, if we're using cameras and bringing in more cameras in the Loop area and into this initiative, what would drones do and what, how would we utilize drones in that case if we're bringing in more cameras in this area? If I could understand that, if I could get an answer to that.
I, I can share at least my, my thoughts regarding it and then I'll, I'll turn things over to Chief Hampton. The cameras, yeah, we need to take that. The cameras are used on an ongoing basis, which are monitored. The drones are intended for special activities that, that might occur. So you'll use the combination of the two. In a, the, good example for the usage of the drones would be the Loop-in-Motion activity that, that we've recently had, where you'll have a significant crowd in one location within the city that you will want to, want to monitor. Now, there could be, that's just an example. There could be other uses, such as, if, as far as collecting intel, for example, if we become aware of, of activity that, that, let's say that it's drug-related. Related. So I think that both, combined, both the cameras and the drones, the drones are special, but the cameras will be there as an ongoing basis. And Chief, I'd turn things over to you.
Yes, and Mr. Rose, and the, the other thing is the quick deployment of the drones as well as, as compared to a fixed location with the cameras. You're, you're also able to hit more remote locations that you cannot, because the, because the camera is going to only pick up at the very best 180 degrees of sight. If it's a 360 camera, it's less in technology standards-wise as far as something, that's a panty camera, that's a PTZ, and, and meaning that you have, it's kind of outdated in today's looks of technology when it comes to CCTV. Now, the drones, like you say, is something more of a quick deployment. Right now, we, we currently have six operators for the University City Police Department. We're actually one of the leading agencies in the law enforcement aspect for the St. Louis County. Only areas that are, are more enhanced in the drone operations would be west of, of University City.
Okay, right. And I do have one more question, and that is actually for Chief Glenn, I believe. And that is, just a question that I have in reference to your, the officers that are, that will be in this initiative and the distance that they are from Wash U and also from the Del Mar Transit Station. If, and all officers, and I do understand this with, with, with most police, they have to file reports. And if Chief Glenn could verify is that, is, if your officers do that at the Del Mar Transit and, and/or do they have to come all the way back, meaning if you've got officers in an incident and, and just say, for instance, Vernon and, and Westgate, do they have to come all the way back to the office to file that report? Are they using the Del Mar Transit? The purpose of my question is this. U-City is in transition of building or renovating a police, for a police station. Would it help if we had a place where that could happen for your officers, if you understand my question, sir?
Yes, sir, I do. And it's one we struggle with because we, you know, like many police departments, we try and keep our officers on the street as much as possible.
Yes, sir.
Back to the station to write the reports is, that's just timed them out. We try and minimize as much as possible.
That's the point of my question. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes.
So we do have a computer at the 5977 building that they, they can do it. We also have our report writing system as a web access to it that we can get it. Sometimes what I find out, and I just feel it's not very safe for officers to sit on the side of the road and write reports in the car. I would prefer them go somewhere, you know, where they're in a safe, secure environment in today's world. Having an, an alternative location that, that our team could go and write reports would be excellent for us. And I, and I think as you talked about with, with the new station, I think that collaboration with our officers is, as much as we can get our officers to work together and interact, just it collaborates and makes for a safer environment in the Loop area itself.
Yes, sir. And that, that was the point of my question, just to, you know, make it, make it more convenient for your officers to actually have another alternative and a safer alternative, if you understand what I'm saying. And so just, just making that suggestion to you and, and then to see if that's something that we can help with.
Chief Glenn, our, our officers also are able to go to North Campus. So there's a couple of different places that we currently use. But, but understand the, in there.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that with the miracle of technology, Stacy is next with his hand up on his screen. So, Councilmember Clay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Crowe. Three quick things. You mentioned a third party, and forgive me if this was in the presentation, I missed, missed it. Who would be doing the, the, the patrolling? Who, who is that third party? And forgive me again if that was mentioned.
What, I'm sorry. I'm Mayor Councilmember Clay. What are you saying, within University City or Washington University?
Ms. Schuler referenced in her presentation that there would be a Neighborhood Patrol Unit. And are these, are these the folks that would be, they're not actually police officers? They're, they're a third party. Can you say more about that, Ms. Schuler?
Joanna, do you want?
I'll let, I'll let Chief Glenn go ahead and explain that.
So we have, we have a multi-layered approach to, to safety and security. With our Neighborhood Patrol Unit, we have a combination of certified police officers and security officers that are on mobile patrol, either in vehicle or bikes. And then we contract with a third security company to provide those neighborhood ambassadors.
Ambassadors, yes.
They're in those high-traffic areas along the Greenway Walk, the Ackert Walk, around the loss area, where we see a lot of foot traffic, but it's hard to get in there with a vehicle. So it's just an additional layer. Now, those security officers also have access to our radio system. So they carry radios. So they can advise quickly if they see something. Their job.
They are security personnel. That was really.
Yes, they're licensed security officers.
Okay.
They're gonna report and they call us right away and then we'll coordinate with University City Police on our response.
Okay. And this, admittedly, this is not germane to, to the Loop specifically, so I asked for a little bit of latitude. At one point in time, Wash U had a program that was offering down payment assistance for homes purchased, essentially in the Third Ward, I believe, north of Olive. And I, I believe there have been some people who've taken advantage of that program, if it still exists. Is there security associated with that? Is it a critical mass of folks who may be within a certain area that would allow for Wash U to, to do some patrols in that area in the Third Ward?
We certainly do continue to have our, our homeowners assistance program that is offered in parts of Parkview Gardens and in the Third Ward of University City. So that program is, is very much active and. So that program is is very much active and being utilized by members of our our community. Our patrol efforts have have focused primarily in this Loop area, in the loops, in the Loop area that we described at the beginning of the presentation. And we look to continue to be able to partner with with Chief Chief Hampton and and with the city to to look at ways to continue to focus on safety.
Thank you. My my final point, Mayor, is more of a comment. As we look to accelerate the uses or add to the uses of our of our drones, in addition to considering any legislative hurdles we may need to jump, I think it's also going to be important to engage, being in an ongoing conversation, COVID restrictions notwithstanding, with the community about this technology. Because while I I certainly am an advocate for it, I know there are some in our community who have questions and concerns. And so as we continue to roll it out and think of different ways in which to employ it, I I think we just need to have that ongoing conversation with with our community. Thank you.
I am looking through my screens, and I have not seen any other member of council who has either physically raised their hand or put their hand up on their screen. So I am going to go ahead. Oh, there we go. I'm going to go ahead and ask my questions, but I am happy to yield my time to any of my colleagues at any point in time. One question I have, and and I'm, I assume this may be Chief Glenn, but I'm not positive. Having lived in Ames Place for some time years ago and always seeing the blue light cameras, blue light police phone stations, I'm always curious. How many how many buzzes a day or a week do you quantify that when the students are on campus? I realize it's probably last year was a little bit of an aberration since the campus was pretty vacant. But is there a, what's the utilization right now? I hope it's not maybe utilized very much at all, because everybody feels pretty good, but I'm just kind of curious.
We've seen a decline in the blue light activations on campus since, you know, cell phones become prevalent with everyone. So we've seen a decline. What we found, though, is the one, the calls we do get, we do get from a lot of visitors on campus that don't know how to get ahold of the police. And the other thing we found is that when people are victims of crime, someone steals their stuff, their cellphone is generally a high target item. So once they get their phone stolen, they they don't know how to, like, pick up a phone and dial, right? Because you're just used to telling, you know, your phone to dial someone. So that's where we see that utilization. But but I will, you're right, it's it's pretty sparse. Been a long time between activations on campus.
And likely with cellphone usage continuing, I mean, I, first off, I'm not saying they don't have a value because they clearly do. Mine's just, I'm assuming with the wider use of technology, that type of security probably gives more comfort to people that they know it's there, but necessarily not utilized at all.
Absolutely. We we had a discussion about three years ago about our blue light system and evaluated it. You know, like you said, we just didn't see a lot of utilization about it. So when we talked to our community about scaling back, they were pretty adamant that they wanted them out there. So again, it is a cost to us, but I think, like you said, it's just the comfort of it, as well as the times that it do, that it does get used for emergencies, really overrides the cost.
And then the next one, I I'm not sure, but I think it was Joanna mentioned the Campus-to-Home Shuttle Program. And just again, as a as a parent of a couple of college-age kids, is that you guys or is that Uber or is that, how is that, how does that work? Is that, I mean, I can't imagine that you guys want to be shuttling individual kids, by the way, young adults, I apologize, young adults, undergrads, to off-campus housing. How do you, how do you do that?
It's a shuttle that is run by the university, working with our our shuttle contractors.
Wow.
We do manage that program. Yes.
And then I think following up on, I believe it was Councilmember Smotherson, and I may have missed this in the presentation. Do you, do you folks have drones as well, or are we the, are we the drone folks?
Yeah, we do not have drones at this time. We are evaluating the program. Chief Hampton's been a great resource for our team. And again, seeing the successes he has, I think it's inevitable that we're going to have a joint program here and hopefully company.
Are there other questions from members of council or comments to be made by either our friends from Wash U or from our staff? Ms. Klein?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I like the idea of of crime prevention through environmental design. And I know it's not one of the main points here, but I was just wondering if, you know, there's been any discussion of increased tax abatement as part of, you know, this joint effort to, you know, as part of the environmental design.
I think that we're continuing to have ongoing discussions with with Wash U. Some of those involve the projecting for dealing with the Loop area. Other conversations are at a higher level, which also include the mayor. And I think that's where we might explore whether, you know, that that's something that would be acceptable to the to the university.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hales?
Thank you, Mayor. I I have sort of a broad question about the section on graffiti abatement. And is is that part of the joint aspect? Or is that just something that U-City does? You know, I drive through particularly Ames Place, you know, quite frequently in Rosedale Heights. The most common that I see is on the U-City dumpsters. And I'm assuming that that Public Works probably has that tan paint. And kind of what's the, what's the process for addressing graffiti there as well as other places in that area?
Our our goal is to get removed graffiti within a 24-hour period if it is on public property. And so we, you know, we will be in a better position now that we have people that are actually out patrolling to to encourage the removal of graffiti that's on private property within a very short time period as well. All of the information that I've received on trying to ensure that you're not creating an environment for crime to happen as relates to graffiti, it has to be quickly removed. And I I'll turn, Chief, am I on the right track?
Yes, sir. That that is correct. The broken windows policy, broken windows theory, if you let it hang and linger, then you're you're asking for bigger issues, bigger problems, and a bigger, softer target. So the work, working with the city inspectors, working with the Public Works Department, and making sure that the officers are versed in code enforcement themselves. They understand the importance of of first reporting it up and then hopefully trying to get it solved and get get in it, get a solution to that to that vagrant that is causing that graffiti.
I do think that it's an opportunity for us to work with the various neighborhood associations, as well as the potential of, you know, as we continue to to dive deeper into this project, perhaps even a volunteer program that is led by the by the police, I think is another opportunity that that we will have.
Anyone else? Hearing no other questions from our members of council, I'd like to thank all of our guests for joining us this evening and for the work you and our city staff are doing on this work. We appreciate it. We look forward to hearing from you again. And we are glad, please, let everyone know, we are glad to have the students back. It makes our city thrive a lot more. It makes everything bustle a bit more. And we're glad that things are coming back to a what I guess I'll call a newer sense of normal that we're all sort of getting used to. So without anything further, unless my colleagues have anything else, is there any likelihood, City Manager Rose, that you want to go into executive session now? Or would you rather just take a break before we start the open session?
Mayor, I would recommend just taking a break before we start the open session.
And we will be, I will adjourn this study session, and we will pick up the public regular session of the City Council at 6:30. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.